So good afternoon. Thanks for joining us in the first day of the International Festival of Public Health. We thought at the European Public Health Association, the sections of Law and Public Health and the Health Technology Assessment, along with the University of Manchester and the University of Crete, that we would hold a session in the context of the festival to discuss a little bit what we all are hearing about. The trips, flexibilities and the waiver, and of course, the pandemic treaty. And also bring to the public health community, some people from the field of law. Particularly going a little bit broader than traditional, if you like, public health and law domains, going into IP rights, intellectual property rights. And also to bring interdisciplinary scientists from biology. And to see whether we can have, whether we can give you a flavor or a taste on what's happening at the moment. And where different parts of the research practice and public health communities are positioned. In terms of the actual event, I need to say that we are recording it. We're not streaming it because we have an overlap with the previous event, but we will be uploading it. We do hope that you are all comfortable. If you switch on your camera, if you ask a question, because we may give you the floor at the end, we will have time for questions. Bear in mind that we are recording. If you have a question, because there's no Q and A function, kindly put it in the chat, we will monitor. Also, 10 days ago, we held another event with the French Society of Public Health, the European Public Health Association and the Health Technology Assessment Session, where we had Professor Stiglitz presenting for economics and Alan Terhun, who's also with us today, discussing more aspects of access and George Pavlikis and also colleagues from like Andy Asamoah from the Global South. And as Michael Berke discussing ethics. That session is recorded and we'll put it in the chat. We did collect questions from there because we weren't able to answer all of them. And we will collect questions today and these will be built in a document and we will make them available, hopefully in the next two weeks. So thank you. And then going straight into the first speaker, George Pavlikis. So George Pavlikis is a senior investigator in the vaccines branch and the head of the Human Retrovirus Actuaries, the National Cancer Institute of the NIH. He's a holder, which is of particular interest to us of more than a couple of dozen, I think 70 patents on vaccine research and also human growth hormone. And I think all his patents, unless I'm greatly mistaken, are handled by the NIH. Of course, he has a body of research done in three, four decades on HIV. And also more recently on DNA vaccines. And he would be kind enough to tell us where we find ourselves currently in the pandemic. And what we're discussing in terms of knowledge transfer and also what discussing in terms of potentially a little bit of dynamics on vaccine patents and innovative, if you like, tools. So Professor Pavlikis?
Can I share my screen? Thank you very much. I have prepared slides, they are a little overloaded, but I believe that having the benefit of recording and reviewing, this would not be a tremendous burden. Do you see my screen?
We see your screen and it's in slideshow, so please go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, so the the next slide is my if I can manage to forward my conflicts and disclaimers. And I want to start by just underscoring the fact that we're still early in the pandemic. And right now, we're getting close to 200 million reported cases in the world. And we have just four millions or so recorded deaths so far. And the scary thing is that each million of deaths happens in shorter and shorter period of time. Even without the complete accounting of India, we have less than three months. The fourth million of deaths. So in my opinion, if anything, the epidemic is accelerating worldwide. At the beginning of the epidemic, the SEDRA organization tried to predict what is going to happen. We now know that we have a similar pattern of waves like the old flu epidemics, successive waves and fall peaks in many parts of the world like we see. So the pandemic is still early. We are not going to get rid of the virus so easy. And the scary part right now is that we do have a almost new worldwide epidemic of the Delta variant and several others, but Delta threatens to be the most you know, prominent right now. And this has produced a new epidemic of very sharp increases in cases of coronavirus infection in many parts of the world. And you see, compared to the previous wave of the epidemic, this new epidemic, mostly by the Delta variant, is threatening a lot of parts of the world, especially also the northern hemisphere. So why this is happening is because the virus mutates and creates mutants that are better transmitted and also they can evade partially, thankfully, not yet completely. The immune system are as stimulated by prior infection or by vaccines. So the bottom line is that the coronavirus is much more easily transmitted than, say, for example, flu. And the new mutants, they are way better. So instead of the coronavirus transmitted uninterrupted in two or three persons from one infected person on the average, now we have the case that the new coronavirus Delta can be transmitted to five to eight people from one infected person. So it is very concerning and threatening worldwide. And we may see even more mutants with different properties. Lambda is a concern in South America, for example. Now, of course, we have very good vaccines in record time. This is an amazing feat of international medicine and cooperation. But as you see in this map in dark colors, the vaccine is distributed mostly in rich countries and probably 2% or less of people, depending on what you count, in 2% of people in poor countries have been vaccinated. So we have a problem. So just briefly in conclusion, I leave you with this you know, bullets that the epidemic is expanding. The new variants are threatening to prolong and expand the epidemic. We do have safe and effective vaccines. This is the brightest part of the equation. They were developed in record time. But the, in my personal opinion, and now I believe of many others, in some countries that have successfully fought the virus, the way to go is elimination, not the mitigation of the virus. And the countries that they have opted to really block the virus completely, they have fared much better in terms of the epidemic damage. Unfortunately, in my opinion, North America and Europe has opted for mitigation to rely on vaccines to block the epidemic in the long run. But I believe that right now, this is mitigation is a major mistake, especially against the Delta variant that causes another violent wave. And as the virus expands worldwide, it creates very dangerous new mutants. They adapt better to the human population. They transmit faster and can be transmitted even to previously infected people. So we see a virus to attempt to escape our immune system. And we do have scary situations in parts of the world with coronavirus devastating places that they have high HIV incidence, like South Africa. And also using this pool of patients that they have a damaged immune system to work in the long run to produce additional variants, stealth variants. And unfortunately also, we have the double pandemic of the coronavirus and misinformation. As you know, that in my opinion, has caused tremendous damage to the cause of eliminating the virus. So my opinion is that we do need to, we are, the virus is spreading like wildfire in a dense forest. And we are not going to get rid of it until we extinguish completely the, all the fires and the embers that exist. When do we expect to build enough, have so-called health immunity? This for a virus like coronavirus and as you see also for flu, it will be extremely difficult anymore. And the answer to me now is probably never. New variants are emerging, causing new epidemics. And even in places that they have a high seropositivity or they have been protected by some partially working vaccines, you do see new variants and new epidemics and in some places while the spread of the virus again. So the pandemic is an internationally major threat. The virus and its progeny is going to stay with us for a long time. And we expect something like the flu models with periodic epidemics, especially in the winter period or in closed spaces. And I do want to underscore, double underscore, that the pandemic that we see and several to come, I believe, are interlinked with climate change and the ecosystem damage that we produce daily. Therefore, we need a global strategy against the climate change that will also address many other issues. Right now, as I mentioned, vaccine is our miracle weapon. The strongest weapon to address the epidemics. We will have drugs, but not immediately. So I do want to say that the previous rapid progress during the years of the AIDS epidemic, which continues and bioterrorism concerns, they resulted in an infrastructure that advanced vaccine development. So now we, we were a little bit more ready to address the epidemic. And of course, massive government support also help. But we do need to address the urgent need for rapid vaccine production and distribution worldwide. And of course, this pandemic is a poster child for attempting coordinate global action, which is urgently needed. And the main argument is by protecting everybody in poor countries around the world, not only we protect ourselves, protect them, but we also protect ourselves in richer countries and contribute to the elimination of the global epidemic very rapidly. So as a veteran of older fights with AIDS, I want to say that AIDS had been in the previous 40 years, a very important factor for addressing global issues. And just to tell you that we are at 40, 40, 40, 40 years of AIDS pandemic, around 40 million victims, dead people so far, and around 40 million people living with AIDS. We have not finished, it's an active pandemic. But, and we do not have vaccines, but we do have very good drugs and prevention strategies. And the AIDS was the first strong case where countries tried to challenge the international model of rich countries producing stuff and selling it to extravagant prices to the rest of the world. And so many things were done and the AIDS activists were instrumental in changing this previous model that the rich countries were fighting for themselves and they, very little was done for poor places like Africa, where the epidemic was ravaging their societies. So it was established that the right to health care is indeed a human right, overriding intellectual property issues of rich countries and companies. And so I think that with this background, the question becomes, how do we achieve presently better international cooperation? The problem is big and urgent and long lasting. There are some mechanisms in place, but such as CEPI and COVAX, but they have not been fully successful yet because few vaccines have been distributed in poor countries. And in my opinion, and these are personal opinions, of course, from now on, most practical approach is to depend on established and rapidly expanding manufacturing capacity, especially in rich and developing countries with proven capacity to build and vaccines and produce them in massive scales. And in a way, excessive reliability on patent waivers, as they were the initial proposals, may at the end be disrupted in the long term and may not be effective in the short term. Especially because patents is the listing of the problem, in my opinion. They become public property after several years. But the, it's important to look globally at the company know-how and trade secrets and also key material supplies that are essential for having a functional system. And I must underscore that the pandemic damaged the international trade and open borders, so which threatens the way of doing things. But the other issue is that focusing on compulsory licensing and parallel import, that means import to countries that do not produce from cheap suppliers, has to be sparingly, otherwise it may interrupt the international trade in unpredictable ways. And it seems to me that a more specific treaty addressing pandemics and how to operate under these conditions may be in the long run, a better international answer. But for now, a lot of rich countries and companies, they have counter arguments for opening up indiscreetly intellectual property, claiming that new drugs are long and expensive to discover and develop. And the requirements that we have as human society in very high quality, high safety and efficacy and of the vaccines and drugs that we produce impose limits and makes the whole thing expensive and time consuming. The compulsory licensing and parallel import may be disruptive if it is not used sparingly. Although, we must underscore that many countries have the ability to do that. I mean, reserve the right to themselves to do it, including of course, USA, England and others. But there are additional problems, like for example, as I briefly tried to underscore, South Africa started with the AIDS epidemic to try to find a different model. But 20 years later from this fight, South Africa does not produce AIDS drugs, it relies on imports. So and there are a lot of other issues like how do we guard internationally for abuse and low quality and counterfeit products? So I believe that in the long run, without strong and consistent IP protection, there may be disruptions and less incentive for investment, especially in the leading countries like USA. So I will just mention that a simple proposal that is on the mind of everybody, I guess, is that we have to establish new international practices. And a simple one in general would be that vaccines and drugs addressing the epidemic will be distributed worldwide and countries will pay according to their income and ability. So therefore, rich countries will subsidize the vaccines for poor countries. But allowing also a reasonable profit for innovators in this space. Otherwise, we may have in the long run, major disruptions. Of course, there are several issues with that. I will just flash them here and I'll stop because I exceeded my time, I believe. Thank you very much.
So thank you very, very much. We do have a question in the audience and I have a couple myself. But before that, I'll introduce Dimitra, who has joined us, who is the Managing Director of the European Network for Combating Fraud and Corruption in Healthcare and was also a member of UFA and is kindly co-moderating with me. Because she has the first question for you, George. So Dimitra?
Thank you, Elena. Well, I would like to raise a question for Professor Pavlikis. And that is, given the current dynamics of the pandemics that were very well shown during the presentation. And also given the experience that we have from past pandemics such as HIV or Ebola, do you think that we could achieve concrete results by using the waiver? That is my question. Thank you.
Yes, I think that what we saw in the last year or half year that we do have vaccines, approved vaccines right now, is the willingness and the ability of the established manufacturers in rich and developing countries to expand rapidly their production. So right now, we have delivered more than 3.6 billion vaccine doses. As I said, especially in the, in the, in the rich countries, ignoring to a certain extent the rest of the world. But this is a great achievement because soon enough, I think that we're going to have delivered in less than a year a number of vaccines that it was the totality of international production of vaccines in previous years. So I don't know exactly how many billion doses of vaccines are produced internationally, but they are estimated about, let's say, four billions or so. Maybe more in some time. So delivering 3.6 billion approximately of coronavirus vaccine is a tremendous achievement. So the international pharmaceutical establishment showed that they responded. So in the short run, I think that the safest is to find a way to further expand production and the industry now is making agreements. They've just announced with South Africa, for example, J and J and lots of manufacturing in India and many other places. This in the short run is the best bet through company agreements that are expanding. But there is no question in my mind that as a global village and as a concerned humanity, we can do better and we should do better. But this should be in the long run and in my humble opinion, should be of course, debated and tried to be focused especially on epidemics that may be coming, more are coming.
So thanks very much for the detailed answer. Perhaps I can, I can fill in because we had a WTO briefing on the 29th of June. And with, there are, at the moment, there are 83 producing sites. Unfortunately, they're not proportionally, if you like, located because there's only one in Africa across the world. So 83 across the world. The projected number of doses for the end of 2021 is actually over 11 million, which is 11 billion, which is actually massive. It goes geometrically. Not of the ones that are currently approved, of all the ones that we're seeing. I mean, maybe we, I can copy the briefing in the chat for whomever is interested. Having said that-
Just to say that, it's, to me, it's an amazing achievement.
It is.
Second to none so far. I mean, we never, in the previous history, humanity has produced that many vaccines of any kind that fast and distributed unfairly, if you want. But at least they were produced. And I think that once they are plenty some, they will find their way to everybody.
So very quickly, the question in the chat is whether zero COVID, which we've been discussing also in publishing since Christmas, whether it's still a realistic possible elimination strategy to battling COVID. That was the question.
Well, it is. It is for New Zealand. It was for Taiwan for a long time. It is for the countries that they tried hard. Australia tries hard. The problem is that no money is an island. I mean, if the rest of the world has a different opinion and are careless, the countries like New Zealand, Australia, Taiwan, many others, I mean, China, eliminated the virus for a long, long time. Now they are threatened by the Delta, which is scary. Because it, you know, it catches us like wildfire from the air. But I believe that the success, the previous year of many countries in the world, show the way. No virus is good virus. And we have, in my opinion, we have to eliminate it and zero virus is the best policy.
Thank you. I do have a number of questions in terms of public funding and so on. But because we're over time, I keep them for the end. And Dimitra, I think if you could kindly introduce Alan?
Yes, yes, gladly. Well, our next speaker is Alan Terhun. Alan Terhun is the Director of Medicine, Law and Policy. Ellen Tern is the Director of Medicine, Law and Policy. She has been the creator of MPP, Medicine Patent Pool of within WHO. Also, she has been the Director of Medicines Enfrentières. And personally speaking, her writings has been always a source of inspiration during her litigation dispute in front of the Council of the State, which is the highest administrative court in Greece. With that saying, I leave the floor to her. Thank you.
And and also I will interject and say that Dimitra and Ellen, and Ellen will use you a lot in the in Greek court, that's true. So and Elena and, sorry, and Dimitra and Ellen are together in the WHO's Fair Pricing Group, which needs its own dedicated sessions. But thanks.
Thank you, Elena, and thank you Dimitra for this very generous introduction. And it's it's always good to hear that the work that we do and the the things that we publish find find are found useful and to to learn that they find their way into Greek courts made my day. I have a presentation which I will start sharing now. Okay, there, there we go. So I will talk a little bit about intellectual property access to access to COVID-19 vaccines and I'll conclude with a recommendation for the pandemic treaty. This is my interest declaration. We're self-employed. We work for non-for-profits, only governments and academia, UN included. We have the occasional grants. Our work is open access and freely available and this is our website. We also have a newsletter. I encourage everyone to sign up for that if this is an issue that is of interest to you or if you want to learn more about it. Okay. Quickly about patents because that is often at the heart of many of these of these discussions. Patents are one form of intellectual property most relevant in the field of of medicines because they they give the creator the the right to exclude others from using the invention for a certain period of time. That is minimum twenty years. In the case of medicines, it's often longer because many many jurisdictions offer patent extensions beyond those those twenty years. This is a, it is a social policy tool. Patents are meant to benefit both the inventor as well as the public at large. It needs to benefit the society and the intellectual property system has, of course, been globalized through the rules of the World Trade Organization. So here we talk about the world society at large that needs to benefit from it. But we also have to acknowledge that it comes with a cost. We've seen that most clearly, of course, in the field of HIV where twenty years ago huge battles broke out over access to antiretroviral medicines that had become available in high-income countries but were not available in the countries where people with HIV were living. And it was that battle that led to a rethinking of the system at the World Trade Organization. Of course, the TRIPS agreement, that is the the agreement that lays out the minimum requirements for the protection of intellectual property stands for trade-related aspects of intellectual property rights, was negotiated well before even HIV was was known. And in 2001, because of the debates and the conflicts and and the legal conflicts that had broken out around medicines access and medicines patents, the the ministerial conference adopted the DOHA Declaration on TRIPS on Public Health. And what that declaration actually does was it said the the right to protect public health is more important. And that it should, it gave primacy to the protection of of public health. And the declaration goes on to describe the kinds of measures that the TRIPS agreement holds for countries to deploy such as compulsory licensing, parallel imports, exceptions to patent rights, et cetera. All countries on the planet have provisions for the use of these, what have become known as the TRIPS flexibilities and those flexibilities have been absolutely crucial in the in the field of HIV where low-cost generic medicines were available but could not without a license be used in jurisdictions where these patents were were granted. Now, fast forward to the COVID-19 crisis. For those of you in the UK, Happy Freedom Day, I believe. It's it's what it's what the government has 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 announced. I wish you the best of luck, certainly after listening, after listening to to Dr. Pavlikis. One one should wonder about the wisdom of some of our government's policies. There is a disconnect often, however, between what government state and what governments do. We've seen that a lot in the last year and a half. Now, global pandemic of unprecedented proportions, there's no news there. Unprecedented response, the global collaboration in the world of science has been absolutely phenomenal. The financing that has been made available to advance these innovations, in particular the development of COVID-19 vaccines, unprecedented and absolutely phenomenal, something very much to be to be applauded. But it raises, of course, the questions around the creation of new intellectual property that takes place with this public financing. And we we heard in the earlier days of the pandemic, bold promises, bold commitments by world leaders that such vaccines, for example, would be global public goods. In the words of Emmanuel Macron, for example, he said, no one will own this this vaccine. The negotiating directive, this is the agreement between the European Commission and the EU member states, which gave the Commission the mandate to negotiate procurement of COVID-19 vaccines on behalf of the member states, has a very interesting paragraph where the Commission commits to promoting the COVID-19 vaccine. It's a global public good. It has a reference to access to for low and middle-income countries and the sharing of intellectual property, especially when such intellectual property has been developed with public support. A very interesting clause in this negotiating directive. But if you analyze the advanced purchase agreements that the Commission subsequently entered into, this commitment is nowhere to be found. The global expenditure on both vaccines and therapeutics has been has been phenomenal, around ninety-three billion. If you look at Germany, has been a very important contributor to the development of the what has now become the Pfizer vaccine, but was one day the Biontech vaccine with with almost half a billion in in financing so that the European Investment Bank. Now, these would have been opportunities to give hands and feet to this commitment of promoting vaccines as global public goods. Because if you spend that kind of money, you can also attach conditions to that. But that has not really happened. That was, however, the expectation because after all, the research and development is paid for. So these arguments that if you have a more lenient approach to intellectual property or you demand the sharing of the intellectual property, that that would affect the ability of these researchers to develop the vaccines doesn't really fly in the case of COVID-19 because those that were developing the vaccines and were bringing them to market were almost completely de-risked by with with public financing, which is a very good thing. Let me be clear about it. I think that is exactly what should have happened. But another thing should have happened, and that is conditionality. That expectation was behind the establishment in May of last year of the COVID-19 Technology Access Pool by the World Health Organization. Somewhat similar initiative to the medicines, the medicines, the medicines patent pool, which ten years ago took off as as an initiative for for HIV. The idea was to offer a platform to share the intellectual property, the technology, the know-how and the material needed to scale up both the development and the production of COVID-19 health products. It's not limited to vaccines. And as I said, the expectation was because of the government financing that this would make making the the COVID-19 pool a reality much easier. The reality today is that the COVID-19 pool is still empty. This is, of course, also the backdrop against which we need to to look at the TRIPS waiver proposal made in October by South Africa and India at the at the TRIPS Council, at the World Trade Organization, and what the TRIPS waiver would do. And that is important to understand because I sometimes hear descriptions of it as something that would sort of bring intellectual property down or or would have far-reaching consequences. It it won't. It is a very, it is very limited in scope. It is clearly confined to COVID-19 prevention, containment and treatment. It is limited not only in scope but also limited in duration, for the duration of the of the pandemic. It was met initially by all high-income countries with opposition. That has changed for the United States. The United States has declared to support a TRIPS waiver but for vaccines, not for other products. The European Union does not. The European Union prefers the use of compulsory licensing. That is something that in the past they have mostly opposed when countries used it, but they have apparently changed their mind and are now promoting the use of compulsory licensing in the context of COVID, of COVID-19. When I say this, this all happens within the negotiations of the TRIPS Council. We, of course, do not know how the EU would respond if countries would actually start issuing compulsory licensing. I should mention that has, it has already happened, COVID-19 related compulsory licenses. So perhaps the EU has indeed changed its its approach to this. We need production scale up. That that million, that eleven billion number is a projection. That is what is needed, but we're we're not there yet and we won't get there if production capacity isn't scaled up. There is unused production capacity. But you cannot divorce the discussion about increasing production capacity from the discussion about the sharing of the know-how and the intellectual property and whatever else is necessary because that is exactly what what hampers the scaling up of the production capacity. The fastest way to have more production of regulated vaccines, so vaccines that that today have regulatory approval or emergency regulatory approval is through the transfer of the technology, including the necessary IP and the knowledge and the know-how, so a level of collaboration. It is more complex than patent licensing or waiving of IP because here we're not talking about small molecules. These are more complex technology and a level of collaboration is necessary. That, of course, is the proposition of the COVID-19 Technology Access Pool, of which I'm a I'm a great supporter and I would really like to see that become a a reality. So pandemic, on the pandemic treaty, the pandemic, the discussions on the pandemic treaty, first of all, the decision to negotiate a pandemic treaty has not been made. It was raised at the World Health Assembly earlier this year, but the decision is postponed until November. So in November, we will know whether a pandemic treaty negotiation will start. But let's assume that it it will. Considering how many fault lines have appeared in the unpreparedness of the world, I think having a better set of rules and regulate things upfront so you don't have to sort them out in the middle of a global health crisis seems to me a very good idea, but we'll we'll see in November whether whether the collective multilateral leadership thinks so too. On access and innovation, so on issues related to intellectual property and technology transfer obligations, I would expect the pandemic treaty to 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 regulate these issues upfront. So that, as I said, we don't have to do that in the middle of a crisis. Key elements for that would be commitments to public financing. We've seen the success of that. That would have to be, it it would be very good to sort of hardwire hardwire that. But with that, there can also a mechanism for the sharing of that knowledge that is created with that with that public financing. We have agreements for the creation and the protection of private goods. We do not have agreements on the creation and the protection of global global public goods. And I would hope that a future pandemic treaty would would provide such a set of such a set of rules because it would be in everyone's interest. And with that, I have come to the end of my time and the end of my presentation. I thank you for your attention and invite you to to visit our website. We have a dedicated COVID page where you'll find a lot more of our of our information. Thank you over, Elena.
So I think it's Dimitra is goes first, but I'm copy pasting the link of your COVID, it's the tools link in your site, Ellen. So Dimitra.
Okay, thank you, Elena. So I I would I would like to go first. My question is, if you think that we could, given our experience in pandemics, if we should discuss a differential form of waiver in the general context of a future pandemic treaty? Or do you think that the existing procedure of the waiver, as described in the current framework, is effective and it's enough? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Well, first of all, the waiver doesn't exist. What exists is the proposal and only recently sort of lukewarm willingness to discuss it. That's where we are with the waiver after after months, months after the the proposal proposal was made. The if the waiver is adopted, and you you may have have understood from my presentation, I'm not the greatest beaver in the effectiveness of the waiver when it comes to vaccines and possibly other more complex technologies. What would be much, the waiver would be important for for other other technologies and it would certainly be very effective for therapeutics, in particular for small molecules, but for the vaccines, you need to have that more active transfer of the technology directly. Now, if you would regulate that upfront, if you would say in a pandemic treaty, if XYZ happens, there is A, the commitment for the financing and B, the commitment that that know-how NIP is shared through a pre-existing mechanism because a COVID-19 pool could continue to to exist or could transform into a into into a whatever pool. I think that that would be the most most rapid way of dealing with it because look at where we are now. So many months, well, more than a year, year and a half after the after the the first outbreak. We knew the beginning that without doing something about increasing production capacity, we would be in this situation of inequitable distribution. And that is exactly what what has happened. So to have a mechanism to avoid that the next time around would, in my mind, be very important.
Thank you. Back to you, Elena.
Okay, so first of all, to say thanks, Ellen, very much for the comprehensive presentation. First of all, to say that George touched upon a little bit on supplies. There's a lot of discussion on raw materials and of course, if you discuss production of vaccines, not, SMIs not, well, even if you discuss molecules, if you discuss vaccine production, there's a lot of machinery and devices involved and know-how. So it's a complex, let's say, knowledge transfer scheme. But having said that, I'd like to to ask a couple of things, Ellen. First one, there was a development on Friday, I think, with Sepi Marketplace being launched and COVAX involvement. And this, of course, is something which is good news. But in terms of affecting more permanent, more radical solutions, more effective solution, do you think it moves us forward or is just putting back, if you like, a stop to a discussion on other means and measures rather than voluntary, if you like, efforts? And in terms of political willingness, there appears to be a lot of inactivity, let us say. Because you get to hear, we will discuss this, we are for this and so on. But you mentioned, and I've seen it mentioned in many places, this common But you mentioned, and I've seen it mentioned in many places, this common good, global who global public health good and so on. But it's not really enshrined in law per se, and I hope Sujita will discuss a little bit more. So do you think we are moving to the right direction or do you think we're in a little bit of a standstill?
Well, for the moment, not much is moving. On the other hand, the political pressure, and that is a direct result of the discussions around the trips waiver. So in in that sense, it is a very important political process that generates a lot of a lot of a lot of activity and might have the side effect that some of these other things are going to are going to happen. So that that would be very important. The other very important element is the Delta variant and the prospect of of further variants and a growing realization that no one is safe until everyone is safe. So there is a self-interest in doing things differently. And I would like that to sink in more rapidly than it does. But I think now we're in wave. I've lost count of count of the wave. I I I carry a Dutch passport. My 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 country is is in an absolute dreadful situation with ten thousand new cases a day, and it's a small country with very few people. So that gives you some idea. Perhaps that will also sort of refocus the attention that we need to do things differently. The pandemic treaty, of course, if one gets it right, it will mostly bring benefits for the next pandemic. And there is still an enormous amount to be done in in the COVID nineteen pandemic. Your question on the SEPI marketplace, I think that is a particular mechanism to solve particular problems of of supply. But it's an answer to the need to to transfer the technology technology for for vaccine production. Now, you often hear it's very lengthy, it's very complex, it's very complicated. A lot of things in life is complicated. Tying your shoelaces is very complicated. Making vaccines, yes, is very complicated, but it is absolutely doable. And if you study the timelines of the moment a license agreement is signed and the first delivery of a vaccine, if it is done with collaboration, that is around six months, which means if this had happened the day the COVID nineteen technology access pool was established, we would have had the production capacity today.
Yeah, and and this, I remember we were discussing exactly a year and a half ago with George, whether we can build capacity. And he would say like in one or two years. I don't know if you remember this, George, would say we need a couple of years. But here we are a couple of years later. So, okay. Again, in the interest of time, but I want to circle back because in in discussing R and D and discussing public spending and how we manage patents and of course, where does true innovation come from? To say that incentivize in terms of incentivization, we have not seen this approach work well for vaccines in the past or for AMR. I mean, Corona is an exceptional case. So we can hopefully circle back to this in the end. Moving forward, I'd like to present Luke McDonough, and I'd like to say I'm pronouncing correctly because apparently it's Irish, but please correct me if I'm wrong. You owe it to Dimitra, who did research on the pronunciation, because she thought she was presenting you. So Luke is associate professor at, sorry, assistant professor, sorry, assistant professor at LSE and a scholar in intellectual property rights. I think with a much broader scope than what we're discussing today, also trademarks and other types of intellectual property rights. And we were very pleasantly surprised to see scholars in the in the intellectual property coming together to formulate a statement. And I I recommend, I will put it in the chat, I recommend everybody reads it because it's very straightforward and simple. It's not an advocacy document, it's a technical document, but it's really simply written, although lawyers and doctors and scientists, we write complex sometimes. So I'd like to kindly ask him to present and also please to mention what prompted it. And how do you see this going forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Elena. And also, you know, it's a great privilege to be on this panel with people like George and Ellen and Sujita. And, you know, I I obviously favor the waiver and I'm one of the co-authors of of an open letter that has been published last week with over a hundred and twenty signatories, mostly professors of IP law at places as far as flung as Oxford to Cape Town to Delhi to Guatemala to Brazil. So, you know, there's a kind of a global network of IP scholars that that I and my co-authors are in contact with. And so we're obviously very interested in this topic. It's probably the first time since the HIV AIDS crisis that intellectual property has been thrust into the public domain in such a massive and important way. And so we were motivated as scholars to respond because we felt we had a duty to because this is our subject, this is the nature of our expertise. And we felt that some of the commentaries that were coming out maybe didn't reflect some of the the nuances of of the debate and some of the historical points. And, I mean, Ellen has already made some really important points about practicalities. I'm going to focus my first point on, you know, this idea of the incentive argument and the idea that the waiver might might negatively impact upon incentives for innovation. And obviously, we've heard George make this argument. We hear this from time to time from various others. All of us have a stake in in getting to a solution here. And I certainly don't think that anybody who disagrees with the waiver is is necessarily an opponent of a solution, you know, and obviously someone like Georgia, who works in this area, has a huge amount of scientific knowledge. But when you look at intellectual property, there is an interesting historical development that is really worth referring back to. And it's that countries tend to support international IP only when they become exporters of IP. And so if you look back through history, you know, for example, Ellen's country, the Netherlands, has abolished the entire patent system at various points to help boost copying innovation, the building up of industrial capacity. So it it is certainly not true that IP always incentivizes innovation. And we see that in, you know, that historical example of the Netherlands at the end of the nineteenth century. You know, Germany did not protect pharmaceutical patents until, this is West Germany, until nineteen sixty eight, Switzerland until nineteen seventy seven, Japan until nineteen seventy six, Spain until nineteen ninety two. India and Brazil, the two countries in the global south that have the best capacity, didn't protect patents from the late sixties up until the trips agreement. And they built up their capacity in in that way. And so there are times at which copying is easier and more cost effective in the building up of your own capacity when you don't protect strong IP rights. And that's one of the reasons why the the trips agreement is controversial and has always been. Because it was sold to to developing countries with the promise that in return for protecting the IP rights, which tend to benefit the exporter countries in the global north, the global south was meant to get technology transfer as a result. And what we've seen over the last twenty years, as George alluded to a little bit, is that that has been much slower than promised. And it hasn't been sufficient. And so when a crisis like this happens, you know, it's only in a crisis that you begin to see how these agreements have worked and where they haven't. You know, the fact that that Africa has so little manufacturing of vaccines is a clear problem and a failure of the trips agreement, because we would have expected more tech transfer by now. But it is also noticeable that there are some successes. For example, South Africa does actually produce some of its own antiretroviral drugs through Aspen. There's also the partnership Cipla, the India Uganda South Africa partnership. So there is some capacity in a country like South Africa. And that is is important to know. And one of the the important things about the Doha declaration, about the HIV debate, was that it it led to the global south having a much larger measure of control over production of generic HIV drugs. Because it's only through that that you can actually get to equal distribution. So, you know, I have utmost respect for for George and his scientific expertise. He knows far more about a lot of this than I do. But I don't agree with him that we need to just let the global north producers do their thing. I think that the way out of this is to have distributed manufacturing hubs in the global south, South Africa being one country where you you can imagine that happening. There's already, obviously, in India, the serum AstraZeneca agreement is very successful. The AstraZeneca agreement with Fiat Cruz in Brazil has been much, much slower, much less successful at producing doses. The AstraZeneca bilateral agreement with Thailand with Siam has been pretty disastrous in many respects. I mean, there was an FT article on a couple of weeks ago about how corrupt the whole thing has become. It's probably not AstraZeneca's fault. The company is owned by the King of Thailand and the whole thing has become mired in controversy. But it's an example of the fact that bilateral, closed bilateral agreements are not always the best way to share knowledge. And it is very disappointing, I must say, that no companies have joined CTAP, as Ellen said. You know, had they done so eighteen months ago, we would be in a much better position than now. And this proposition by India and South Africa to waive the international IP obligations under the trips agreement does not come out of nowhere. You know, if you look at October twenty twenty, when this proposal was first made, at the same time as that, there was a report by Human Rights Watch that predicted that sharing of vaccines would be a problem, predicted that the global south would be abandoned essentially to its fate without even vaccines for healthcare workers, as the WHO had recommended. So, you know, for me, yes, it is amazing that we have these vaccines. It is amazing that we've produced three billion. But for me, it's fifty percent an amazing success and fifty percent a complete inhuman disaster. And it's that second part that we need to to address. And in in the open letter and in the longer academic article, we talk about how the waiver goes some way to addressing this. It's not just about patents, it's also about the sharing of trade secrets, regulatory data, know how and so on. And, you know, ideally, we would get there through voluntary solutions. But we have to admit that these so far have really let down the global south. And it is entirely logical that in response to that, they would call for a waiver of in the international obligations. And it's worth pointing out that particularly in vaccines, that the the idea that patents create a kind of superb incentive for the development of vaccines really does have to be questioned, because again, if you go back through the history of this, vaccine development has often been publicly funded, as it was in this crisis. And, you know, Georgia's own institution, the National Institutes of Health, is an amazing institution. It's a public institution. Oxford University is a public institution. So, you know, a- as humanity, we rely on public institutions and public funding for a huge amount of our vaccine research, because pharmaceutical companies don't generally pump money into it. It is an area where you might consider it to be an area of market failure. And so I'm not concerned that the waiver would create this negative incentive or this problematic precedent that would that would negatively affect innovation in the future, because we already rely on the public for that. And in my view, we should be looking to learn from this crisis at how we have succeeded in many respects at bringing public and private together. You know, one of the key M and R A vaccine patents comes from the National Institute of Health and is used by Moderna, for example, in their technology. So, you know, we have a certain amount of sharing happening, but it's simply not enough. And we have to think about, I mean, you know, another point that George made again is that there's a concern that if we share knowledge too much, that, you know, Russia and China will will kind of get rich at the expense of of the West. And, you know, again, this is not an argument that I really believe in. I mean, for one thing, BioNTech has a separate agreement with Fosun in Shanghai. And there's already technology transfer of the M and R A vaccines going going on there. So China already has this technology or will do very soon and is developing its own mRNA vaccines. Thailand is doing the same. You know, intellectual property is not just about providing a reward for inventors. It's also a means of creating artificial scarcity in a market in order to do that. And we have to question whether we want to create artificial scarcity in in a time of a pandemic. And, you know, at the moment, it's unclear whether we can trust the the market to even produce enough vaccines by the end of this year. You know, the IMF and Nature have predicted we may get to six billion vaccines if we go on as we are. Obviously, the Airfinity, which presented to the WTO recently, is predicting more like ten billion, which would obviously be great if if we if we got that. But the other problem is distribution, and this is why you need hubs in the global south producing the vaccines. Because the global south cannot trust the global north on distribution. Pfizer is already going to the FDA to push third doses. Israel is already giving third doses to its citizens. You know, and when you think about the amount of doses that have been wasted, particularly in the United States, have been allowed to expire. You know, even if we get to the ten billion, how much will actually be available and be made available to the global south? You know, COVAX was promised two billion doses this year. We're more than halfway through the year, they've delivered only a hundred million. So, you know, we need to think radically here and we need to rethink some of the the assumptions that are not always so reliable, actually, if you unpack them, as I said. And as my final point, any pandemic treaty, as Ellen said, must address questions of intellectual property. And it must do so because this is about power. Who has the power to facilitate production of these vaccines? We know that offers by companies like Teva in in Israel, BioLice in Canada, Insept in Bangladesh, Bavarian Nordic in Denmark have been refused. They sought licenses to boost production and they've been turned down. So we know that this is about power. And we need to distribute some of that power to the global south, just like after the HIV AIDS crisis erupted in South Africa. It became more easy for the global south to trade between itself with respect to to vaccines. So I'll conclude there and let the the rest of the speakers come in. So thank you again for this opportunity.
Thanks very much, Luke. So there are too many points, very, very quickly to say. I do not know if you managed to see what we did last time, which is ten, ten days ago, roughly, two weeks ago. For us in public health, more close to health economics, doing a patent restricting, if you like, is restricting access. It's an artificial instrument. Because, you know, in this case, you had infinite demand. So why would you need such an instrument? But there were many people discussing incentivization. And of course, the question that arose in in many of our minds, but it's not discussed at all, is whether the people making the decisions, which be cis, with corporate people and so on, have any real touch other than some stakeholder meetings with investors, which are hedge funds and trusts and so on. And of course, let's say, family owned business may very well aim to have long term profit and be very willing to boost the market, whereas a CEO may be very willing to have maximum profit for a couple of years, maximum four or five years, because this is his own, if you like, in quotation marks, turnover. And then, of course, we had some events, I think it was Sujita in a in a brief discussion we were having last week that mentioned. And why do we have Covid Shield and Vaxavir, which is the same basically vaccine, is the AstraZeneca vaccine, accepted for vaccination certification in Europe, but not broad? There could be valid reasons for qualifying sites. And at the moment, we haven't seen, even within Europe, if you look at the newly qualified in quotation mark sites and forget about global side south, you see that we have a European south, if you like. So and and Balkans and so on, there are very few countries that are doing R and D, maybe a couple. And there are very few countries that are doing production at the moment. So this dynamic is continuing. So I have, I think, two questions for you, if I may. The first one is about derisking in the history of patents. And of course, people think accountability and and, you know, transnational companies are very recent, but they go back to West Indies companies and three, four centuries ago. So the first question is, do you see any particular risk in actually introducing, going forward with a waiver? Do you see there's a concrete risk that we will lose investment from the private sector? And the second one is, if we forget for one second for coronavirus and we forget about the vaccines, what do other experiences in terms of abuse of dominant position teach us? We've seen lots of interesting things happening in the UK in the last few weeks, I think, with NHS buttons and so on. So what do we, what lessons do we have in terms of behavior from the industry? Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Both great questions. I mean, I think on the on the first question, we have to, all of us have to admit that no major governmental decision here is without risk. That's absolutely true. But there's risks in doing nothing. I mean, I often talk to opponents of the waiver. I think it's really important that we keep dialogue open with people who don't agree with us. But there's risks in doing nothing. I mean, I often talk to opponents of the waiver. I think it's really important that we keep dialogue open with people who don't agree with us. And, you know, one of the points that, you know, when they say to to me, you know, how will the waiver work? How will you get sharing of trade secrets? What happens if the companies refuse and all this? You know, there are all these complicated questions that we go into i- in our long paper in in some detail. But I I often turn it back to them, which is what is the risk of of going on as we are? What is the risk of the status quo? It's very, very clear that there's a massive risk to the global south of going on as we are. Because patents and kind of this idea of hoarding knowledge, you know, if we can argue that countries have hoarded doses, I think it's fair to say that companies are hoarding knowledge. And if companies hoard knowledge, that creates a massive risk for the global south. And one of the perverse incentives of being, you know, a C E O at Pfizer or one of these major companies is that, you know, what they're on record as saying, they want to charge a hundred and fifty dollars for booster doses, if not this year, then next year. Now, if you have limited production, and there will always be limited production, we'll never have unlimited production. So, you know, we'll always have limited production to some extent. What do you do as a C E O? Do you prioritize selling high priced booster doses to the West? Or do you prioritize lower cost first doses to the the developing world? So there's a perverse incentive in that the power of of the I P gives to that C E O or that company. And it can lead them to make decisions that, as you say, are not good behavior. We would not consider that to be globally normatively a a a good thing. So governments have to play a role here. The waiver is one aspect of that. It's not the only solution. It's not a panacea. But it is one way to direct companies towards sharing. And I'm heartened by the fact that the threat of the waiver, rather than creating, let's say, a lack of investment or anything like that, the threat of the waiver is bringing companies to the table. We're seeing Johnson and Johnson coming to an agreement negotiated with the president of South Africa and Aspen to manufacture the entirety of the vaccine, not just fill in finish in South Africa. We're seeing Biontech discussing, though they've only made vague promises so far, about setting up a hub in Africa. So so far, you know, the people who six months ago were saying, if we even discuss the waiver seriously, it will be, you know, the end of civilization as we know it. It will kill all investment in in pharmaceuticals and in health innovation. It hasn't hasn't played out that way. And it didn't play out that way at the time of the H I V AIDS crisis either. So, you know, sometimes these arguments are made, you know, a little bit self servingly by by private companies. And we can't just focus on one risk of, let's say, the waiver being granted. We have to look look at the total risk. And right now, the virus is running rampant because we don't have enough production of vaccines and we have unequal distribution. So addressing those issues has to be the the way to go. And I would prefer to see it done voluntarily because it will be quicker than if we have to go through the waiver. But in the absence of companies going, you know, making enough bilateral agreements or joining CETA, what choice do we have? We cannot go on with the status quo.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the voluntary, nobody doubts voluntary is faster. But indeed, it was not happening until the ball got rolling with the discussion or debate on the waiver. I think Dimitri, because his texting has a question for you.
Yes, thank you, Elena. I would like to to ask a short question. In the field of distribution, do you see a role for international organizations?
Thank you. Ideally, yes. I mean, you you should, you know, the the W H O has the expertise here. So ideally, they would be in a way in charge of distribution. And they recommended that, you know, if we were going to look at this as a global public good and not as a commodity, what would have happened is that healthcare workers across the world would have been the first to get the vaccine. I mean, last month, more than a dozen Ugandan doctors died from from Covid. And, you know, in a developing country, losing healthcare workers is a much bigger disaster than it is in the ritual, as as terrible as it is. And my own sister in Ireland is a healthcare worker, so I have a huge amount of of time for them wherever they are in the world. But we have to accept that it's far more difficult to replace healthcare workers in the global south than it is in 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 the rich north. And so the fact that that didn't happen is a colossal global failure. And there's no excuse for that because it wouldn't have even been that many doses. And when you think of, you know, the fact that Canada, the U K, the U S, the amount of doses that they're hoarding and they're only now beginning to distribute out, sometimes at the point of almost expiry, it really isn't good enough. So, you know, we need a better solution. We need more power to countries that otherwise don't have it with regard to to distribution.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Back to you, Elena.
No, I think it's back to you because it's Sujita. It's Sujita next. And then we have perhaps a little bit of time for everybody. We've touched on too many topics.
Okay, we'll see more question later on. So, so yes, let me introduce to the audience Dr. Sujita Sabramanian, who is a senior lecturer in law at the School of Law and Social Justice of the Liverpool University. Her main research interest includes global governance relating to I P law, focusing mainly on pharmaceuticals and green technologies. She's also interested in constitutional law, particularly in constitutional morality. That being said, Dr. Sabramanian, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much, Dimitri and Elena. I'm really happy to be on this panel. I think the problem with being the last person on the panel is that many of your points are already spoken by the people before you. So in a way, I think Ellen has covered a lot of the things that I was planning to say. And Luke mentioned some bits as well. So there we go. I'm going to kind of try and navigate around it and recreate my structure of what I was going to say and touch upon some of the things that have not been touched upon, so as to give it to kind of a more broader discussion. So I think I want to sort of for us, for a minute, to step back and evaluate how we have actually dealt with the pandemic since since the beginning. And just a couple of issues, just to raise an awareness, which I think everyone is aware of anyway, but, you know, just to highlight it anyway. So if we recall way back in April twenty twenty two, this is at the height of the initial lockdown and so on. We had the interior minister for Berlin, Andreas Geisel, accusing the United States of modern piracy. After they were reportedly diverting a shipment of masks, which was intended for the German police, were shipped back to the United States. So and they were basically calling for the the German government to ask the United States to confirm to international trading rules and not use Wild West methods in the face of a global crisis. So we see that, in fact, since then, both the Trump administration at the beginning of the pandemic and now the current Biden administration have more recently and clarified that they will be invoking the Defense Production Act to address domestic essential goods and material shortages, which is caused by the pandemic. So basically, this is an act which confers on the president a broad set of powers to mobilize the resources and production of domestic private companies to meet key national security and defense needs. And it also allows the president to reorient the nation's domestic manufacturing and production capabilities to ensure that companies prioritize and fulfill the contracts, which is necessary to address the nation's needs. Similarly, we see in the U K, though the Johnson government was initially quite slow to respond to the pandemic and not just initially, but various junctures, actually, which resulted in magnifying the impact of the pandemic. The approval of the the regulatory approval of the vaccine and its rollout in the U K is considered to be of some success in comparison to the other European nations, which had lagged behind in the initial period. And of course, that, but we know that the lackluster fun, funless, lack of funlester day that is today, the nineteenth of July, the so called Freedom Day, where we were not really having the fun that we expected to have on this Freedom Day, shows us that despite the fact that much of our population is double vaccinated, we are not really out of the crisis, as George had indicated, because we have obviously more and more variants coming into the picture, which has clarified to the wealthier nations, as Ellen had pointed out, the self self serving interest, wherein that unless the health of all is taken into account, the health of we are not really out of the crisis. So obviously, it's it's not simply a case of ensuring that your own population is vaccinated, but it's also a case of ensuring that the rest of the world is also vaccinated. And that simply by diverting the vaccines and ensuring that there is only enough supply for your own population is not going to be good enough. So it's within this context that we address the issue of, for instance, various health governance bodies and also multilateral trade regimes, which have utterly failed in trying to ensure very quick responses to a pandemic of this magnitude. And 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 that is pretty much clear. So the question then is, I mean, we are now talking about I P waiver. We're talking about a global pandemic treaty. We are talking about, you know, putting in place new mechanisms to deal with pandemics such as this and so on and so forth. So does it mean that the current measures, regulations, mechanisms that we have in place have been inadequate to deal with a pandemic of this severity? Is that the case? So if we were to look at, for instance, so something like the Global Pandemic Treaty that we are proposing, the current version of it is the the International Health Regulation, I think it's called the W H O's, which works under the auspices of the W H O. That has two key roles. You detect, you alert other nations about a pandemic and you ensure that there is there's a way to put together health technologies that can act as a countermeasure to deal with these these sort of health issues or health pandemics. Now, in that specific role, it has the 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 mechanisms is already in place. It's not as if we don't, we are, we are working on a vacuum. The the what we are talking about in terms of the Global Pandemic Treaty, we already have in the form of the International Health Regulation. Similarly, when we're talking about I P waiver, we're talking about, you know, ways in which we need to deal with intellectual property and so on and so forth. Those are already addressed as part of the flexibilities in the W T O's TRIPS TRIPS agreement, as we have been mentioning. So if we already have these mechanisms in place, then, you know, every time we have a new pandemic or a new issue, we come up with, and that is my criticism here. In relation, for instance, an example I'm taking is the I P waiver, which which Luke so passionately talked about. Normatively, I'm in agreement with the idea of an I P waiver. I think it is a brilliant idea that we should ensure that there should be a waving of technologies, especially when much of these technologies are funded, as Ellen pointed out, by public funds. So that being the case, why is it that in the face of an unprecedented epidemic, normally when we're talking about epidemics, and this is the reason, one of the reasons which have been pointed out in some of the literature as to why we have struggled to sort of cope immediately and quickly with this pandemic, is that normally the pandemics have been seen as the epicenter of pandemics in the last century or in the last few decades. Have been seen not to be occurring somewhere in the global north. It is seen as something which is taking place because of governance issues in global south countries and so on and so forth. So this is not something that we expected to hit the global north countries to an extent that it has hit us now. And therefore, suddenly, we are trying to see how we can protect ourselves. And 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 suddenly, we find out that protecting ourselves is not just sufficient. We need to protect everyone else in order that we can still ensure that our population is protected from the variants. So the problem with things like the I P waiver, I find, is not that it will stop investment and it will stop incentives and so on and so forth. I totally reject that argument, just as Luke has done and as and Ellen has done and so on. The the problem I find is that we are simply creating another bandaid. And by by sorting out another bandaid, we are refusing or failing to look at the key problems which we have, which we have been facing for quite a while. If we look at, for instance, the H I V, the way in which we dealt with H I V, for instance, tens of millions of people died before we actually said, put anything in place at all. And that too, at when the South African government had filed the case stating that they were going to use the competition law provisions. This is, it is at this point that the pharmaceutical companies came to heel and immediately put forward solutions voluntarily. So this is another problem with this voluntary licensing agreements and so on and so forth. I mean, now that there is a pandemic of this magnitude, obviously, there is, it's it's impossible that compulsory licensing provisions could not have come into effect at all. So if those provisions were taken into account, obviously, that would have worked. If you look at, for instance, the W T O dispute settlement body and appellate body and so on and so forth, they have shown quite recently in a couple of the cases that we noticed, for instance, a tobacco plain packaging case, the asbestos case and so on and so forth, that the the they are willing to take into account public health issues in or preference public health issues instead of intellectual property issues where necessary. So in the case of a pandemic, quite clearly, it would have been possible for us to preference public health issues in favor of sorry, not in favor of intellectual property issues. So why is it that we are falling back into the trap of creating these alternative small solutions? I mean, for instance, the I P waiver is only for three years. You're saying effectively for three years. It's a very limited waiver. What you're asking, the 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 specificities of the waiver is very, very limited because originally, when the I P waiver proposal was submitted by South Africa and India in October twenty twenty, it was a much more broad proposal. But now, because of the various questions that has been put to South Africa and in and India and the other supporting countries for this waiver, the 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 latest I P waiver proposal is very, very limited. So they're asking for very limited and for a specific number of years, the specific kind of favor and so on and so forth. So to me, I find that my criticism against waiver, for instance, is that we are, we are creating, we're not really creating long term solutions by looking towards short term issues. So that that doesn't necessarily mean that I'm saying that, oh, we need to not not address the problems which the current pandemic has thrown at us. Obviously, we need to address it. And and what I'm saying is, it has shown to us over and over again, it has shown to us that the current mechanisms are not in place to actually work and function the way we have set it out to function. So, for instance, one, one the Global Pandemic Treaty, for instance, just just quickly to address that. So for instance, Ellen was mentioning that a global pandemic treaty must have, must address issues of intellectual property rights. We should talk about health technologies in relation to that. Well, yes, of course, that is what we would advocate, and I agree completely with it. But will that happen? I mean, okay, this is supposed to happen sometime in November. And my guess, my very cynical view would be that intellectual property would not actually take a place like we hope for it to in in the Global Pandemic Treaty. Why is that? How is that? And and a very good example for that is if you look at the, for instance, the climate climate change treaties. If you look at the climate change treaties repeatedly, we find that in the conferences, C O Ps, we talk about the issue of intellectual property actually being a barrier to climate technologies, green technologies. And the the lack of technology transfer in relation to green technologies. Repeatedly, that comes into the discussion and very quickly and easily it is squashed down. It's it never has ever taken a very, very prominent place as it should, considering that climate change is also a very similar threat to the pandemic that we are facing, in that it is global, in that it affects everyone, in that it affects, you know, people in in very, very equal terms, and there is no escape for anyone, no matter how privileged you are. So so in in that sense, I doubt, I'm very, very cynical about the issue of intellectual property actually forming. Though I'm I'm not against advocating it, of course, I'm very much for advocating it, but I'm very cynical to actually see its presence in the Global Pandemic Treaty. So my view is that instead of to actually see its presence in the Global Pandemic Treaty. So my view is that instead of um, uh, looking for a different treaty and hoping that if future pandemics will suddenly be dealt with in a much more uh spectacularly different way because we have a new treaty to deal with it, um, I, I, um, uh, my, my view is that we need to stick to what we have. We need to expand on what we already have. And we need to address the, the, uh, the reasons why many of these uh issues are failing. And of course, we can look into uh individual uh issues to address them, but then I'm, I'm not sure whether we have uh sufficient time. I'm happy to take it in the form of questions and so on and so forth. Now, one final point I want to make is about um, uh, um, the question of human security, collective security. So generally, the United Nations uh Security Council uh deals with the issue of collective security only in times of war and peace. So effectively states that if it, if some, if uh there is a threat to peace and security for one nation, you, you kind of treat it like it's a threat to peace and security for every other nation. Therefore, everyone collects together to try and uh, uh, deal with this uh threat in a very collective way. Now, the uh definition for um collective security has expanded a little bit, especially uh in the face of Ebola, for instance, wherein they were willing to consider the issue of Ebola as a human security issue um to try and address um, um, uh, the Ebola pandemic also through the UN Security Council Forum. But once again, what we see in the case of the pandemic, um, the COVID pandemic, COVID nineteen pandemic, which actually had affected uh, uh, a broader uh, number of countries and people and so on and so forth, is that the way in which the United Nations Security Council could deal with um the human security issue um, uh, for COVID nineteen pandemic, the resolutions that has come out in relation to that is much more minimized in comparison to that we see for Ebola. Uh, and why is that? And that is also because of um the um geopolitical issues between United States and uh China, uh, because of which they could not come into some sort of an agreement as to what they need to um agree on in relation to dealing with the COVID nineteen pandemic, how they should address it and so on and so forth. So what we're seeing here is that there is a lot of geo- geopolitical issues that have come into the fray, just as in the past. Um, and uh, the, much of the problems that we are uh dealing with at the moment uh in um, uh, in terms of the failure um, um, about the uh, the, of the mechanisms in relation to the COVID nineteen pandemic is to a large extent because of um uh issues that need to have been addressed at its roots instead of trying to create a further and new uh mechanisms, measures, regulations and uh legislations. Um, my one final, final point before I go, um, uh, or stop at this moment is, is um, uh, that I would encourage uh people to look at um, uh, um, a, a policy document that was actually proposed by the uh, the Labour Party in the um, previous general election in relation to um, um, medicines. I think the, the document was called Medicines for All, uh, or Medicines for the Many for um, uh, and basically what they had set out was to show that the current uh system um doesn't seem to work very well considering the amount of public funds that go into creating much of these uh medicines. And uh given that the government is putting in so much money, uh, for instance, for the AstraZeneca, uh, the government had put in one billion. Um, as, as Ellen pointed out, in the case of Pfizer, there was uh half a billion and so on and so forth. Overall, around ninety-three billion has been spent. Now, given that public funds goes into creating these uh vaccines, these health technologies and so on and so forth, um, it, why is it that there is a privatization of profits while socialization of cost happens? So we are, we are paying-
Sorry to, to interrupt. We are a little bit uh, uh, run uh, out of time in order to have some questions perhaps.
I'll just finish the sentence and I will be done with it. Yes, no problem. Um, so we have, uh, so effectively the, the government is funding the medicines. The government is funding the risk. I mean, okay, only for this pandemic because given its unprecedented nature. Uh, but government is funding also the purchase of these medicines from these private companies. So the profit seems to be held by the private companies. The cost and uh, uh, associated with it is help, uh, is taken by the public. And I think that needs to be addressed. And what, what the uh policy document had mentioned was that we need to bring together uh, a government-funded research and development uh body, which can actually have its own patents, which it uh makes available to the rest of the population or to other countries uh for a much um, um, smaller price, for instance. So I'll stop at this point and then, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this so interesting presentation about uh, and for highlighting the, the existence of remedies and tools. It was very interesting. I don't know if we have time for questions or if I can-
We, we don't, but, but I think I will go back to George. I mean, we can do a quick recap. Luke had to go because we are way over time already, but um, uh, I, I will sort of uh, uh, I will, I will, I will be a little bit provocative. I don't know if you remember last year, George, with RMD severe, we had some discussion on how a trial was set up and so on. And then they got orphan designation for uh, grounds, which is, you know, it could not be substantiated. And then there was an outcry. And then within days, Gilead rescinded, uh, you know, the FDA had granted it. And the, the company actually sort of withdrew that, the request for orphan designation. Um, and market exclusivity is, we didn't really discuss so much in this particular panel, but it's a, it's a broader discussion. So Luke touched upon some of the points you mentioned. Do you want to counter? Because I think you're not against these things. You just want a temporal, if you like, order, some order in time on how we approach the topic.
You are muted, Professor Pavlikis. If you can unmute.
Uh, I hope that helps. Okay. Uh, too bad that Luke is not with us, uh, because he raised a, a number of excellent points.
We are recording. We are recording and we'll all be on E-Mus.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the thing is, I, just uh triggered by some of his excellent points. To make the point that although we do live in a global village and I'm affected probably within days or weeks from a virus that grows in Uganda. Um, our ability to apply even existing international laws that we have agreed upon um is limited, to, to say the least. And uh, but what I mean is that the international affairs are uh affected and indeed regulated by the imposing power of strong states. So it's everybody for themselves. We have to recognize that despite our international organizations, et cetera. It's only recently that we even managed to prosecute some people for war crimes against humanity. Um, and so I think that, uh, you know, the unification of the world in a global village uh, uh, is much faster than our ability to comprehend and impose um, new rules and new international situations. Um, and I think that this is, is, this is reflected also obviously in international trade. So as Luke said, um, the states that they don't like the status quo, um, they make their own rules sometimes. And the trend with the um, uh WTO, the World Trade Organization, was um, to have kind of uh more, more and more expanding iron rules that reflect the international necessities. Of course, they are imposed by the strongest. And uh, the arguments that are made is that uh, in the long run, we have to find something that serves the entire humanity. I think this is the big picture as much as I can see. Now, also, I, I want to make sure, uh, of course, I do not agree with everything that I mentioned in, in, in my statements as arguments against um, um, the, the, you know, that we, we definitely need to improve the current situation. It's obvious. Uh, the question is how and how not to interrupt the good things that exist. So for example, uh, uh, my study, from whatever I understand, is that I know that after the, the last many, many years, uh, you can say that the American public by paying extravagant prices uh for medicines has subsidized a lot of uh develop, new developments for the entire world. And at the end, after years and after lots of profits, um, and many of these things become um, eh, the properties of the entire world. It's not perfect, but it's working. So for example, we have now an explosion in cancer therapeutics and a lot of that is um, supported tremendously by private investment. Now, can it be done differently? Yes. Like in the case of um, of uh, uh, COVID and the, uh, the pandemic, we know that the people mentioned ninety-plus billions of uh public investment and probably it's much more if you, if you count everything. Um, but I don't see the same urgency for other sectors. So I think that the private sector, the way that has developed in the uh western world, uh world and, and many other places now, has a lot to offer because it provides um, flexible uh investment and financing expecting profits. So um, before we change this model, we have to make sure that, uh, for example, the governments will step in with the same eagerness that they showed at the beginning of the pandemic and make this public investment. In my opinion, I don't think that it's going to happen everywhere. Now, uh, what I see is that the governments uh for vaccines, for example, um, and, and some rare diseases and uh, Elena mentioned uh, the um, uh, you know, the, the travesty of RMD severe becoming uh, a, you know, um, an exclusive uh seven-year uh, uh, market drug uh through this mechanism. But governments find the necessity to provide even more privileges to companies. Um, eh, like for vaccines, they indemnify in America, as you know, um, they, eh, the, the vaccine manufacturers um from um lawsuits eh against them. So the guy, the, the public pays for any problems of vaccines. And the, the reason was that, that because the vaccines eh traditionally had low profits, that um, the private companies would not invest in this sector. And um, the um, eh, the seven-year exclusivity that was mentioned is actually another measure to uh incentivize companies to invest in rare diseases where um, it's very difficult to think about commercially how to um, to get back your investment. So um, there is a system that works with market um, you know, incentives, the way that it works. We have to think of how to improve and build on it eh before we make very dr- drastic changes. And to say that intellectual property is a lot of things from the moment that we accept to protect Coca-Cola and the trademarks and the movie and, and music, et cetera. We have to really think that uh, eh, there should be eh equal or stronger in treatment of how to uh think about intellectual property in very key industries. Of course, we have to disseminate it for the whole humanity, but I think that this is a long-term goal.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I think although we are way off time in fairness, and I had a lot of questions also for Sujita and so on, but we can address them perhaps via email. Perhaps Dimitra, if we had, starting from Sujita and then going to Ellen, if we have one final statement from, from all of you on what you think is the most relevant step at the moment in terms of dialogue and what we should all be engaging in the public health community? And whether you see uh any, uh, let us say, critical moment, critical event coming up to determine how we proceed in terms of the pandemic treaty. So um, we start perhaps with Sujita?
Yeah, so um, my-
We, we need to keep it, just to say, let's keep it at one minute.
Okay. Okay. So my view would be that we need to create some sort of a, a, a very clear governments which are funding, providing public funds um to uh the private sector for the creation of various types of medicines and health technologies, must keep a, a database, um, so they know what exactly has come out of their funding, the output that has come out of it. Uh, any of the patents that come out of this public funding must be shared with the government right away. So the government always has um, uh, some sort of a non-exclusionary license, for instance. I mean, they could use it as crown use anyway, but they must be able to pass it on to a- anyone else if necessary. Um, therefore, um, the, there must be, I mean, my view would be, yes, uh, to create a database to ensure that public funds are not privatized.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and, and okay, in, in, in those saying, of course, that there should be some profit or, or some reward to EU and US patents, one can argue that the sequences came from Asia. But thank you very much. And then perhaps Ellen?
Uh, I, I can be very brief. I fully agree with Sujita. Um, where I, where I do not agree with her is that I tend to be more optimistic and that's perhaps because I've been involved in a number of initiatives where I was always told, you're crazy, this will never work, this will never happen. Um, and, but some of them actually did. So I think we need to keep the hope, but work very hard to make sure that pandemic treaty or further agreements have a high degree of, of ambition. Over.
Thanks. No, but what she said-
To you, Ellen.
No, but what she said in terms of the relation is easier because we all have a short-term memory. I think there are at least three or four examples this year similar to the MDSV. So you can see very strange behavior from regulatory bodies or governments. Having one thing in policy, in writing, doing another thing in the field. So some sort of multilateral interdisciplinary, maybe even think now monitoring what's, it would be very nice to have. Um, and I know you're doing a lot in the uh, in, in your own entity, Ellen, but perhaps there's some room there for more interdisciplinary collaboration. And then Dimitra is on to you to conclude. And just to say, we did record this because we couldn't livestream. There was not enough time to disseminate and we will merge it with the previous one and hopefully uh, send text capturing what we discussed briefly for all of you to review. So Dimitra?
Yes, I think we, we heard some very interesting presentations. And I think that we all agree that this is a global problem. And of course, we need rapid solutions. Uh, some of us are more optimistic, some others are not so optimistics, op- optimistic, but I, I believe that we can combine, uh, let's say, all the tools, existing tools with new one, nuances uh which are adapted to the pandemic situation. And that being said, back to you, Elena.
Uh, thank you. Thanks very much for sticking around twenty minutes overtime. Have a lovely, uh, I don't know, rest of the evening, rest of the days of the week, summer who goes on vacation and stay safe and we will be in touch. And thanks to Greg and to Hannah for kindly supporting us technically.
Bye-bye.